We will get started with the November planning and zoning meeting. If you plan on speak, if you just maybe have a little bit of a thank you much speak, please go ahead and sign in now. It makes it so much easier than when you get ready to speak and stand up and say, I hadn't been sworn in yet and we have to start all over again. So if you would go ahead and sign in, it'll get you sworn in a little bit. All right, we will get started with the agenda. The first item is approval of the October invoices.
So moved.
Mr. Jesse. Mr. Garrett, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Approval of the October ninth minutes. Are there any changes that need to be made to the minutes? I'll take a motion for approval for those.
I'll make a motion for approval.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And those are approved. Approval of the November agenda for tonight's staff. Is there any changes that we need to be made to the agenda for tonight?
Two items which are ultimately going to be postponed a month on the next slide. So the last two, so PDP 2555 and 2554 should have been, but they are being postponed, so they're not being considered.
Okay, so they're not even on our list yet?
No, it's just for the record.
All right, thank you. So I'll need approval for the November agenda.
I'll make a motion for approval of the November agenda.
Ms. Singer.
Second.
Mr. Jesse. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And we have some old business, ZMA 2025-34, North Hamilton Street property, and ZMA 2025-36 slash PDP 2025-37. The stables at Blossom Park have both been postponed. So if you were here for either of those, oh, thank you. If you were there for either of those, they have been postponed till next month.
And Charlie, what is this North Hamilton Street? What is that?
Yes, it's the North Hamilton Street. It's a zone map amendment. They're proposing to put in, move from R2 to R3 for zoning district for housing.
All right. Thank you, sir.
All right. Mr. Perkins, if you would care to swear everyone in, plan on speaking.
If everyone signed in to speak, stand and raise your right hand, please.
Oh, my God.
I think that's enough. You swear, I've heard the same, should make an act of truth to the best of your information and belief.
Yes.
I wasn't expecting that.
All right. First item of business we have tonight is PDP 2025-46, Geo Specialties Preliminary Development Plan for the Installation of Outdoor Storage Facility in a Hoop Barn for a specially geotechnical contractor located on Sadieville Road.
Yes, good evening. My name is Mark Carper. I'm very happy to present this application for preliminary development plan presented by, or put forth by Geo Specialties. As mentioned, they're seeking to do outdoor storage at this particular site. It will include one structure, which is a 3200 square foot hoop barn. And I do have information on each of these. To let you know that this property had recently gone through a zoning change amendment a few months ago, and it was moved from A1 to B5. So the concept plan was presented at that time, so this body may have some familiarity with it, and we're focused primarily on the design components for it. You may have remembered from the original concept, they had proposed doing it in two phases. After initial submission, we made a recommendation to go with one phase, so they're focused on Phase One, which is, would be the outdoor storage and the hoop barn, as mentioned. Forgot to mention, they are seeking a waiver, and I'll discuss this in greater detail. This is a waiver request for the placement of the property boundary fencing. This is required for development of properties that are adjacent to A1 zoned properties. And they are seeking waiver for that. There is a fence existing and they're proposing a different fence. And as mentioned, I will provide the details to that particular request. And just to let you know, we are recommending approval of that waiver. This is aerial image of the site itself. It's along Sadieville Road. The structure you see across the street is fire station number two. And as you move toward the left, actually, you'd get fairly close to I-75. In the ZMA, this particular property and properties to the west or to the left, as you see here, were designated on a future land use map as commercial properties. So this is considered to be sort of the outlier peripheral component. That comes into play in one of the requirements for the setbacks. Here's an image showing the zoning of the property. You can see it's surrounded by A1. And as mentioned before, it's zoned B5. And you can see one portion of the currently zoned commercial area to the bottom left of this particular map. This is the design they have presented, and I have a closer-up vision at the next slide. Present this to give you an overall sense of what they're providing, and also to provide these statistical details. As shown here, the property is a little over, well, just a little bit under five and a half acres. They are seeking outdoor storage. Of the 5.45 acres, 2.8 acres will be under development. Point two acres will be within the right-of-way, and they are addressing that through some proposed landscaping. They are proposing five parking spaces. I did underline a key point here, the gravel area, which is the lay-down area where they were proposing to put the equipment and materials for their business. It's 101,656 square feet. The structure, as I mentioned, the hoop barn, will be 3200 square feet. The VUA, or vehicular use area, which is the paved area you see in the gray on the left of the map itself, 8,570 square feet. VUAs do require interior landscaping, and it's basically 10% of the VUA area, and they propose to meeting that requirement with 877 square feet of interior landscaping. They are offering peripheral landscaping. And on this particular map, and I'll point out again at the next one, you can see some trees on the north side, on the east side. On the northwest corner and on the south portion, and the western portion of where the lay-down area would be, there's existing woods. They're proposing to use that material to fulfill their landscape obligations. And in terms of the last few figures, for commercial properties, they are required to have canopy up to 10%. The existing canopy is now almost at 30%, with additional trees and vegetations they're adding, they'll increase that, so they certainly meet the canopy requirements for this application. As mentioned before, here's a closer-up version of this design, and here's an illustration of the hoop barn they're proposing to put in. The hoop barn is sort of just to the right of that gray area where the parking is. And sort of in that gray area, you see, and I'll point to it on this particular illustration, pardon me, right here, this is the area of interior landscaping. Interior landscaping, while it meets the area requirements, our ordinance do require some dispersment of that. And so it has a minimum and maximum area for each version. So we would ask that that be redesigned for final site plan, but we are glad that they've met the area requirement, just dispersal requirement, have to be changed a bit. Okay. Other aspects of this particular application. They are provided water by Kentucky American Water Company. Scott County Fire Department has requested the fire hydrant be installed within the parking area of that particular property. No public sewage is available to that property. The applicant has notified the Scott County Health Department of the development, and a site valuation has been requested. The applicant's proposed use of a portable toilet until such a time as specific, a septic system is installed, and certification of approval of private sewage system signed by the county health department will be required for the final development plan.
Mark, the, just for note, right, the fire station right across the road is on a septic system at this time also, right? So there shouldn't be a problem with being able to get a septic field on that property.
That'd be good. As mentioned before, there are setback requirements for this. The B5 zoning district does require 50-foot setback from all sides. However, since the applicant property is the peripheral portion of this particular zone, there's a greater setback requirement for structures, and they do meet that requirement. The proposed hoop barn will be 100 feet from all property, 100 feet or greater distance from all property lines. In terms of access and circulation, this is to specify that the VUA area, the entrance and the parking and the turnaround areas are to be paved, which they have provided. In terms of equipment, lay-down yard, this type of use in that zone does require conditional use permit. So we have scheduled with Sadieville Board of Appeals, or Board of Adjustments, for Monday evening for a hearing presenting this application as conditional use. If approved by the Sadieville Board of Adjustments, staff recommends that it be conditioned contingent on the completion of the construction and landscaping and acquisition of certificate of occupancy within six months of approval of final development plan, and in a return to the Sadieville Board of Adjustments to demonstrate completion. The reason we're asking that is because they are requesting use of the property prior to completion of all the construction that would be required. Justification or explanation given, the applicant here tonight can speak further to that, has to do with the coming winter weather, the inability to adequately put in the landscaping as required, and I think they're wishing to use asphalt for a good portion of that vehicle use area. And it's my understanding asphalt plants shut down during the winter months. So for that reason, they don't want it to be delayed. And as mentioned before, we would ask that, you know, the, for the conditional use permit, that the fence be installed, the privacy fence, which will go around the use area, and that the gravel be laid down first, prior to any use. Parking, they will have up to three people working there. For this type of use, the requirement is one space per 1.5 people working there. So it'd be a requirement of two parking spaces, they're proposing five. They have not put down a handicap parking area. This would require one handicap parking area, and we request that for the final development plan. Regarding the fencing, so they have provided some illustrations. As mentioned before, when you have a development of a property that's adjacent to an agriculturally-zoned property, it is required to put in a six-foot-high, a no-climb fence at the boundary itself. The boundary fence, or the existing fence, there's a picture on the left side. It's wooden post with some strands of wire, and the applicant speak a little bit more to that. It is present. They proposed fencing around the use area, the gravel area, the lay-down yard. You see the illustrations just to the right of that first picture, so it's the second one just far right. They would be eight-foot-high, chain-link fence, and it would have this kind of durable screening on it. So in regards to that particular request, we are in favor of granting a variance for the purpose of, or the reasons that the existing fence does demarcate a difference between the two properties. There's clear marking of the boundary. It may not act as impediment, a strong impediment, to going over, but the proposed fence around the use area would act as a strong physical deterrent for entry into that particular property, thus physically separating these two uses. So for that reason, we do recommend a waiver of this requirement, that the fence be placed at the boundary line. There's an existing one, as again can demarcate the differences between two properties, and the proposed one, which does meet the physical barrier requirement.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, of course.
Is it really necessary for them to have an eight-foot fence? Why not six-foot?
It's what they have proposed.
They want to go to that extra expense?
Well, I don't think the, and the applicant speak to this, it may just be, that's a standard security fence.
Okay, all right, thank you.
As opposed to meeting this particular requirement, a six-foot high. Okay. As mentioned before, they do offer some trees around the periphery of that particular property. The, they have indicated that the existing vegetation, they would like to use to fulfill some of their landscaping obligations. The ordinance does allow for that. If the existing vegetation can fulfill those requirements, so this does require inspection, and they have consulted with an arborist to come out and view it, and identify those areas, and to fulfill, to make sure that what's present does fulfill the obligations of the landscape requirements, and where it does not, they'd be required to infill plants to make that complete. Sorry, it's a bit wordy there, just to save that little bit of information. As mentioned before, they have the VUA vehicular use area, 8,577 square feet, proposing 877 square feet of interior landscaping. As I mentioned before, I pointed out, it's kind of clustered requirements, and our ordinance does call for some dispersment of that. So the final site plan, we'd require that they meet that dispersment as required by The landscape plan also includes some landscaping going into the right-of-way. That is permissible, does require collaboration with KYTC for the encroachment, they're getting permit on that, and they're negotiating a maintenance agreement on that particular landscaping. The canopy, as mentioned before, they greatly exceed the minimum requirements for canopy. I think up to 40% is what they'll achieve, whereas 10% is what's required. Staff recommends approval of the proposed preliminary development plan, the outdoor storage area for parcel number 154-00-3004.000. Located along the south side of KY 32 or Sadieville Road, across from county fire station number two. Should the planning commission recommend approval? Staff suggests including the following conditions of approval. One is the waiver, waiver to the boundary fencing requirement for the development of properties adjacent to agriculturally-zoned properties. And the conditions of approval be as follows. All applicable requirements of zoning ordinance subdivision and development regulations, approval of Sadieville Board of Adjustments for conditional use permit for outdoor storage at the site. The applicant shall be responsible for all off-site road and public water and sewer improvements required to serve the proposed development. The applicant shall install a WITCO-approved sanitary system. And again, there will be a certificate on the site plan itself that the, would have to be signed. All requirements of the Scott County Fire Department regarding fire hydrant locations and emergency vehicle accessibility, KYTC approval of proposed entrance, KYTC encroachment permit and maintenance agreement for proposed right-of-way landscaping, a species-specific landscape plan to be included to make sure they fulfill all the landscaping requirements, including use of the existing vegetation, a photometric plan to be submitted. Final development plan should comply with all stormwater management requirements according to the current stormwater manual. Our visions or amendments to the approved preliminary development plan shall be reviewed and approved by planning commission staff or the planning commission. The preliminary development plan approval is valid for two years, subject to requirements of Article 406, Section A of the Subdivision Development Regulations. Prior to any construction or grading, final development plan, including all required construction plans, shall be approached, approved by the planning commission staff. The applicant shall schedule a pre-construction meeting with the planning commission engineer department to review construction and policies and establish inspection schedules. This shall include a grading permit with fee and land distribution permit, erosion, control, surety. And lastly, prior to, as part of the final development plan approval, the applicant shall provide the planning commission staff or GS Division with a digital copy of the application plan. Thank you very much. I'm open to questions, if you have any for me.
So you said early on in your presentation that they were wanting to get some of this work done before bad weather set in. So will they be able to come back to you for their final development plan before next month's meeting? If they meet with Sadieville folks and the highway department?
Right. So what they're requesting or wanting to do in terms of the conditional use is to make use of that for laying down materials and equipment for their business. They would not be able to complete all of the construction required.
Okay.
And so they would, what we're proposing to Sadieville BOA is that prior to laying anything down, they put in the concrete and the fencing, or sorry, the gravel and the fencing, prior to doing that. And then, as they work on construction, we would propose that that would need to be completed within six months of approval of the final development plan.
Okay.
So once this is approved, they'll have to develop, or provide a final development plan that gets approved, and once that is approved, they can then begin putting up the fence, laying on the gravel, put in their materials, and as they're laying down the materials, bring in their hoop house, or sorry, their hoop barn, and complete the landscaping as weather allows.
Got you.
Mark, could you go back to the previous?
Which one?
Number five on the, next?
Yes.
It says Scott County there, and it says Georgetown here. Does it matter, fire department?
A bigger pardon?
It says Georgetown.
It says Georgetown Fire Department.
Yeah, it was my typo on the staff report. So my colleagues graciously pointed it out, said, hey, it's not Georgetown, it's Scott County. I was like, okay. So I beg your pardon for that mistake.
Thank you. Come on, we've got the sharp ad tonight.
Have you all got any phone calls from the public concerning any of this?
I've not received any phone calls or received any letters regarding this application.
Thank you.
There you go, Dave.
Colissa, have you heard anything else?
Do we have the owner or the contractor here?
Yes, he's here.
All right.
Hi, I'm Jamie from Geo Specialties. Do you all have questions?
Do you have anything to add to Mark's presentation?
We just wanted to get the conditional use with weather coming in, plants closing. I think you all understand why we want to add, you know, because if we don't want to wait.
When's the Sadieville BOA meeting?
Monday evening.
Monday evening, yeah.
Does anyone in the audience have questions for the staff or from the owner here? All right, thank you, Jamie.
Appreciate it, thank you.
So we have to make a motion to approve this?
Yeah, do we, does any of the commissioners have any more questions or comments?
If not, I'd like to make a motion to approve PDP-2025-46.
I have a motion by Mr. Jesse.
I'll second.
Oh, I do that every time. Mary's on the road.
It's all right, you can just call me Mayor Gene.
I have a motion and a second for approval. Ms. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Jesse?
Yes.
Mr. Vest?
Yes.
Mr. Stone's not here, Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Adair?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Jamie, if you could come up here and see Mr. Perkins?
Thanks, y'all.
Uh-huh, thank you. The next item on the agenda is ZMA 2025-56, Little Lighthouse Childcare Center. This is a zoning map amendment from R3 to B4, located, excuse me, located at 1696 Oxford Drive. And this is a public hearing, so I will now open a public hearing.
Yes, thank you very much. As mentioned, the applicant is seeking a zoning map amendment to change the zone for this particular property from R3 to B4. The surrounding zoned areas include R2, R1C, B5, and A1. And you'll soon see a map illustrating this variety of zoning districts within that particular area. The proposed use for the site is presented by the applicant is for a type-one daycare center. And the reason for the requested zone change is that R3 does allow type-two daycare centers, but not type-one. Type-one daycare centers are allowed by Wright and all commercial properties. And as such, we suggested to the applicant of the commercial properties or zoned zoning districts, we thought B4 would be the most appropriate, and B4 is community commercial type of zoning. The parcel surrounded by the red border is the applicant, is the subject site. You can see you have B5 directly to the west, or to the left of this map. You have R2 directly to the south of this particular property, which is zone R3. You have R1C, I think that's C to the right or to the east of this, and you have A1 to the north of that, two separate parcels. I do want to make a quick note showing this particular map, and due to our workshop, you informed me a little bit better in regards to some of the proposed developments that are planned for our community. And that is, you see Lexus Way to the top left corner?
Mark?
Yes. Lexus Way up here, for those who are facing the way, it brings this road up here. So there is a planned extension of this particular road. The planned extension of that road, that comes into effect when we're considering traffic to this proposed use. And I'll bring that up as we get to that particular issue. Here's an aerial image of the site itself. You can see that parking is present. I'll discuss parking availability relevant to the needs, the requirements for this particular use. The area to the left, I think that's proposed for Phase Two, sort of the grayish-looking area just to the left of the parking area. Phase Two, if it comes to that, that would be an outdoor play area, according to their site plans. And let's see here, a little bit about this particular property, the background. As mentioned, it is zone R3, which is high-density residential, and is located along Oxford Drive, which is two-lane collector road that runs parallel to Cherry Blossom Way, and it sits approximately 0.67 miles north at intersection with Connector Road, which is quite a busy road. From 1973, 1995, it was zoned A1. A property and building were leased to the, and used by the United States Army as Army Reserve Office and Training Center. 1996, it was zoned R3 for the purpose of doing a conditional use permit for professional office by Toyota Manufacturing. Professional offices are allowable in R3 as a CUP. 2004, Liberty Baptist Fellowship was housed there. They received a CUP for type-two daycare, which is permissible in the R3 district. 2010, Crossroads Christian Church gained use of it through a CUP. 2021, the purchase, the property was purchased by Sweeney Properties, and CUP was given for professional offices. 2023, the building was subleased to Timbers Church of Christ under CUP. And September of this year, the property became vacant, and it's been open for sale or for lease, and the applicant is seeking to, I believe, lease that property for the use, as mentioned before. Excuse me. So as mentioned, the applicant is requesting rezoning, the B4 operated day, type-one daycare facility. The ordinance does allow for type-one daycare facilities to be permitted in all commercial districts. We define that type of daycare as any facility other than a dwelling unit which regularly receives four or more children for daycare, or any facility, including a dwelling unit, which regularly provides daycare for 13 or more children. Preschool children of any daycare staff received care in this facility, they shall be counted or included in the number for which the facility is licensed. Beg your pardon. The proposed hours of operation, 5:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. Monday through Friday. The applicant is proposing to care for up to 89 children. The number of staff is yet to be determined. The state, there'll be sufficient to meet the ratio requirements by the state of Kentucky. The more infants you have, the greater number of staff is required. So they have a variety of ages, depending on the group ages, they'll have staff appropriate to meet those ratio requirements. have staff appropriate to meet those ratio requirements. Development plan, development is defined as any change in the use. They're not proposing any change in the building itself, at least externally, but any change or intensification of use does require a development plan. Since they are not proposing adding additional parking spaces or adding new buildings, it'd be a minor development plan that I present to staff for review. In regards to sanitary sewer, they are under five acres. They are within the urban service boundary, and as such, typically they're required to be connected to a public sanitary sewer. We would request that either they connect to sanitary sewer, or in lieu of that, that the capacity of the septic system to accommodate the proposed use is assessed by the Health Department and is found to be sufficient. In terms of parking, they do have 48 spaces on-site with 89 children, and the maximum number of staff required, let's say they're all infants, they require, I think, maybe 18 staff to do that. So, the actual requirements for the parking would be 33. Those parking requirements are one space for every six child, every six children that are coming, and one space for each employee. So, given that ratio or the amount of kids and the maximum number of staff required, 33 is the amount of parking spaces that would minimally be required, as mentioned before, that they have 48. So, they have more than enough supply in terms of parking. In regards to traffic, the main avenue by this site runs parallel to Oxford Drive is Cherry Blossom Way. The only entrance from Cherry Blossom Way, the most direct entrance from Cherry Blossom Way, is Timberland Way. It's .2 miles south of the subject property. That intersection is one of the places where there are high cases of traffic accidents. In regards to that concern, as mentioned before, and thank you for educating me a little bit earlier, the proposed extension of Lexus Way that provide a much closer arterial access and to Oxford Drive rather than going through the Timberland Way. So, that movement of traffic could take that avenue as opposed to this little bit more risky one. More specific to the project location, we do have some concerns about the sight line going into and out of the drive. Oxford to the north, there's a hill that goes down, and it comes up for drainage. There's a blind spot, and so if you're coming down, you can see a car approaching, and then it disappears and would come up whether you're turning left or coming out. So, that does provide us some concern. So, we have proposed that for the development plan that be addressed in terms of meeting the safety requirements for that particular use. The maximum peak hours in terms of traffic generated based upon the Institute of Transportation Engineers, their generation calculator, it would be under 100 vehicle trips in the AM and PM, so not required to do a traffic study. That is one of the components in terms of the site design we would like them to address, would be the entrance and exits from that particular drive itself. And the applicant's here tonight, and he may be able to speak to that concern.
Mark, could you go back to the aerial view?
Yes.
I drove out there this week, and the driveway itself sits on the very top of the hill.
Yes.
If you're going north, it does dip down about where you can see that light spot at the end of that tree line.
Yep.
It dips down there, but I don't see that a car would be completely out of sight there. And then if you go south on the property, if you wanted to relocate the drive on down in the middle of a parking lot, that's down in a low spot, plus there's a fire hydrant right there in the right of way. So, I really feel like this may be about the best spot for it.
That may be the case.
It does have dips on both sides, but they're not so deep, and they're not so far away that a car will completely disappear. You'll be able to see any vehicles coming from either direction.
Well, we did visit the site as well, and we sat in the drive itself, and we saw a car coming down, and then it disappeared, and then it popped up.
Is that right?
Yep. It may depend on how tall that vehicle is.
Yeah.
As to whether or not you can see it, once it goes into that low spot. But from our experience, and our engineer is with us, and he can testify to that.
Okay.
It does present an issue which we believe should be addressed.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, I don't know with the average height.
It's been a problem for churches and everything.
Yeah.
Standing out there with traffic control and stop vehicles. If you don't see the car drop down over the hill and wait five seconds, then you will pull up.
Then it does disappear. There wasn't a traffic out there when I was, so it just appeared like you wouldn't be able to see it, but I'll concede that to you there. But there is on the south side that fire hydrant sitting down there.
Yes.
It would have to be probably relocated or something there.
Maybe, yeah.
Yeah, and you had mentioned about Lexus Way. How many years has Lexus Way been on all these maps? It's not been built yet.
You know, that's a great question.
I mean, I'd like to know. How many years has it been?
Given my limited time here in the county.
It has been on there for quite a few years, but last month at the Chamber of Commerce luncheon, the mayor gave the state-of-the-city address, and that's his number one big-ticket item, is completing Lexus Way through there. So, I think that will probably happen in the next couple of years, maybe.
But there's no, like, guarantee it will happen?
No, there's no guarantee.
Okay.
Funding and all, but.
Okay.
How on the wish list.
Yeah, and that needs to be.
Yeah.
So, let's consider legal considerations for a zoning map amendment. So, this particular hearing is about that application, less so the site design. In terms of legal considerations, according to State Law 100.213, the findings necessary for proposed map amendment include the following. Before any map amendment is granted, the Planning Commission must find that the map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan, or in the absence of such a finding, that one or more of the following apply, and such findings shall be courted in the minutes and records of the Planning Commission or the legislative body or fiscal court. Those other components being that the existing zoning classification, given the property is inappropriate, and the proposed zoning classification is appropriate, and B, that there have been major changes of economic, physical, or social nature with the area involved, and which were not anticipated in the adopted comprehensive plan, which have substantially altered the basic character of such area. We believe that Item 1 and Part A are applicable in this case, and I'll make an argument for that. In regards to comprehensive plan, under the element for human services, it states that its fundamental principle of that particular element includes that Scott County citizens should have access to a basic standard of living and human services that are not limited to arts and cultural enrichment, but include childcare as one of the key components. The comprehensive plan espouses the goal of improving access to health and wellness services, and declares increasing the availability of quality and affordable childcare as a strategy to that end. And I won't read the little paragraph below, but it basically espouses to that same notion, providing for accessible, affordable, quality, health, childcare for the community. Key component in terms of zoning map amendments is future land use map, and I will have illustration of the future land use map here in just a moment. The 2024 future land use map shows this property, as well as other properties, to the south and to the east of this particular one as being low-density or desired to be, or anticipated to be, low-density residential. That particular land use is defined as one that allows residential uses as well as home occupations, home occupations being those small businesses and institutions, will not detract from the basic residential integrity of the neighborhood itself. That same land use map depicts to the north of that particular property, as well as to the west, to be, desired to be, commercial uses. We do know that the property just to the north, to the north is A1. It would be adjacent to the extension of Lexus Way, so it might be appropriate for a commercial. And also, the property to the west, which is on the other side of Cherry Blossom Way, is currently zoned as commercial, as B5. This type of zone permits goods and services, and thus, we feel that proximity to those proposed, or those envisioned areas of commerce might be appropriate as well, despite the fact that it was designated as low-density in the future land use map. I do want to note that despite that designation, when that future land use map was drawn, this particular property was zoned R3, which is high-density residential, and the properties just south were zoned, or are zoned, R2, which is medium-density residential. Here's an illustration of the future land use map. You can see the cluster of orange, which is the commercial in terms of that area. I've outlined in the sort of more spotlighted viewing of that particular area of Georgetown, and I have an arrow pointing to that particular property. As you can see, maybe you can see, but it's currently zoned or viewed as future land use map as low-density residential. You have commercial in terms of desired use directly to the north and also to the west. I'd like to provide analysis of the legal considerations. So, before, again, any map amendment is granted, the Planning Commission must find that the map amendment is in general, is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Staff does find the zoning map amendment is in agreement for the proposed rezoning. The comprehensive plan supports increased availability of quality and affordable childcare. And in drafting its 2024 land use map, the community concluded that low-density housing is preferred future use of the property, and others to the south, southwest of, despite those being zoned R3 and R2 at that time. However, the future land use map indicates that properties directly to the north of the site, currently zoned A1, are candidates for being commercial sites. The adjacency of the subject property to these areas designated as, in the future land use map for future commercial, easily lends to the inclusion of the subject property into an area for future commercial use designation. As well, the B4 zone, community commercial, serves as transition zone between the larger commercial type zones and neighborhood residential uses. Analysis of the legal considerations continued. If it's thought that the comprehensive plan does not lend support to this, one of the options would be that the existing zoning classification, given the property is inappropriate, and the proposed zoning classification is appropriate. Want to sort of cite the history of this particular property. Subject property had been zoned A1 until rezoned to R3 in 1996. Records indicate that its use pre and post 1996 has been primarily for offices and religious facilities. Despite the R3 designation, there are no records that the property has been used for residential purposes. Regarding Subitem A above, staff asserts that the existing zoning classification is appropriate, and the proposed zoning classification is in line with historical uses and is better suited to the continued use expected. Our findings are as follows. The applicant has requested the rezoning from R3 to B4. The reason for the proposed change established a type 1 daycare facility. Records indicate subject property has largely been used for office space and religious facilities. Staff finds a proposed zoning map amendment satisfies the requirements of KRS 100.213-1 and KRS 100.213-1A for the following reasons. The rezoning addresses the state's stated goal of the comprehensive plan to improve human services through increasing the availability of quality and affordable childcare. Proposed rezoning adheres to the intent of 2004 future land use map. While the future land use map designates the subject property as future low-density residential, its current zoning is high-density residential, and its history as commercial and institutional space, and its adjacency to an area designated for future commercial use, lends to designating its ongoing use as commercial. A minor development plan would be required to change, for the change in and increase intensity of use, and development plan must address the requirements of zoning ordinance and subdivision development regulations, which includes a traffic component we discussed earlier. So, we do recommend approval of the zoning map amendment. If the commission recommends approval for this application, staff recommends the following condition to be attached, that all requirements of zoning ordinance and subdivision development regulations be adhered to. The applicant shall return to the Planning Commission for preliminary development plan. Approval for any change in existing structures or use as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Yep.
Staff, have any questions?
Looks like, I guess there were one, two, three, four, at least five conditional use permits, right, since 96?
Yeah, there were several.
Yeah, it seems to indicate the current zoning isn't the correct. I mean, I'm familiar with the building. I was actually involved with the lease of it way back during my Toyota days, and it was used at the time for all the assessments for filling the line 2 jobs. So, there was an insane amount of traffic going in and out of there.
And your daddy and I were in reserves out there.
Many, many, many.
More than 50 years.
That would have been 1970, right?
Yeah, I can't believe that building has, at least half that building has been there for over 50 years.
It's crazy.
And had so many different uses.
None of which fit the zone.
None of which fit the zone. And so, yeah, let's get it right.
Yeah, I would agree.
Okay, is the owner or applicant here? All right, come on up to the stand, please, and state your name.
My name is James Hunter.
All right, James, thanks. Do you have any questions for Mark, or have any corrections or anything needs to be made?
I don't really have any questions other than it's likely that we're going to have to consult with our engineer about what to do about the entrance and exit driveway situation. I'm not, I'm not sure what to do about that. Suggestions are welcome.
Okay, all right, thank you. Does anyone in the audience have questions for our staff or the owner? All right, seeing none, I will take a motion.
Do you declare a public hearing?
Oh, thank you. I need to close the public hearing, and so we can now take a motion of some sort.
I'll take a motion for approval of ZMA 2025-56. I mean, I'll make a motion, not take, I'll make.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Jesse?
Yes.
Mr. Vest?
Yeah.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Adair?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. And Mr. Thornton, you can see Mr. Perkins down there at the end.
I didn't know you and Daddy did reserves there.
For me.
Training.
Right.
Yeah, that goes a long way back. I'm 54, and I was a baby when Daddy was in reserves. Tell him my age, but I'm not as old as David.
No, not quite. All right, that concludes all of the new business for the night. We've got two other items that the commission needs to hear, and the first one is the discussion for the Sharp properties. And just for the record, I would like to say the developers were here last month. We approved one portion of that, and in the meantime, they have come to the commission and wanted to make several different proposals, which was nice on their part. And so, our staff sent out letters to property owners in the area. I'm assuming most of you all got those, the reason you're here. And so, this, the staff will not be making any votes tonight. Barlow Homes is not making any proposals tonight. They are just presenting some options for the community and for the staff to look at, and so, at this time, I will turn it over to Mr. Barlow, and we'll go from there.
And can I ask one clarifying question?
Yes.
I guess ideally, next month, you would make, have an official proposal on the agenda that.
That's the goal.
At some point in time in future, yeah.
Right, okay, all right. Just making sure I was clear on process.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners, for being here tonight. My name's Michael Barlow. I'm the engineer that designed the plans that we'll be showing you all tonight. I think you already touched on this, but why are we here on other business? We got three main reasons. First, we were asked to provide alternative plans to evaluate some of the concerns raised at the last meeting. We will show you those. We will show you those plans and explain them to you, some of the changes we were looking at. Second, we will explain why we think our original initial plan that we submitted last month was the only reasonable use option, considering the unique characteristics of the property, the ordinances, the comprehensive plan, and the future land use map. Finally, we will try to answer some questions at the end of our presentation. So first, we came up with some alternative plans, and major differences we kind of landed on between our initial plan and some of the other suggestions we heard last month were... First one was two-story versus three-story apartments. So one-story sounds better, but it does result in more buildings, more sprawl of the apartments to meet the original unit count. So with two-story buildings, we'd be looking at seven buildings as opposed to four three-story buildings. And you see, and staff spoke to the issue of sprawl with the recommendation of approval last time. Allowing developers to build up instead of out allows for efficient land use and conservation of open spaces and other features. So, and this site was zoned PUD because of the unique topography and required connections to adjoining properties. That limits where we can go with multi-unit families. We looked at placing all the buildings on the south side of the property as far away from the McClellan Springs subdivision as possible. But due to existing streams and the required connection to adjacent properties, that's just not geometrically possible to make that happen. So if we were to look at the two-story option, that would require sprawling up Payne's Depot Road and building, apartment buildings would be closer to the McClellan Springs subdivision. So the second issue we looked at was open space closer to the apartments. We would need to reposition at least one building to put additional green space near the apartments. And we feel that's not the best use of the green space. Generally speaking, apartment tenants don't want areas where people congregate outside of their patios and decks. We don't feel that's the best use of green space for them. Additionally, walk from the parking lot to the apartment is one of the biggest concerns of apartment tenants as well. So spacing out, putting parking farther away with more green space around the buildings isn't desirable. So where do apartment tenants use the green space? Primarily speaking, they will access the, we're proposing a trail system in green space in the back. They will access, primary access for the apartments will be along the public road here, sidewalk to this cul-de-sac, where they'll be able to access our proposed trail system. Additionally, we're going, we're proposing a access on, this is Street A, trail and access easements between some lots, behind some lots to the trail system as well for these apartments on the north side of the main road. And then, this ties into our connectivity that we're proposing for the entire area with pedestrian systems. So, sharp properties right here, and I have, this brown line is our, are some nature trails, pedestrian trails proposed by us in this application, and then some previously required and improved ones on future developments. Our, our nature trail system will tie into a required pedestrian trail in a future phase of the McClellan Springs subdivision, whatever that's developed, that's required. And then, we have, we will be required to construct an additional nature trail in our Creeks at Ward Hall subdivision. So this is a pretty extensive trail system that can be utilized by the single families, the multi-family, and will be accessed for McClellan Springs, even the Ward Hall subdivision and our Creeks at Ward Hall subdivision. So we feel it's a very useful green space area. And then additionally, on the, for the apartments, you know, we do have a green space along Payne's Depot Road, and we're proposing additional landscape measures with our initial plan for additional trees and landscaping to be planted there. We have a pool as well that will be for apartment use, and then there will be a clubhouse in one of the buildings as well for apartment use as well. So we feel the apartments have a lot of green space and common space to access and throughout the development. So that kind of speaks to our two options we proposed and our plans that we'll show you. But I'm also going to have our legal counsel, Chris Hoskins. Yeah. He's going to speak on the, how our plan, how decisions were made for our project based on the comprehensive plan.
Can I ask of the drawings that we have, which, what are the, like, A1, B1, and then there's A1, B2, which ones you're referencing?
Yeah, can you put up the...
Yeah. So...
The two-story and the three-story footprint?
Yes, this is the two-story footprint, and this is the three-story. You can see, we have 1, 2, 3, 4 for three-story, and then 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 for the two-story.
It looks like there's, on the two-story options, an A2B1 and an A2B2.
Correct. So the main difference is we have comments about this open space in the back corner. Looking at moving it up to the front. So we could move it up to the front here or potentially here up on the corner. We don't feel that's the best use, and then we would move a building to the back corner there for the units.
And are these trails open to the general public, so just the people who lives in these subdivisions that are attached to your building?
I would say, yeah.
I mean, you've got trail systems in other subdivisions that...
Yeah, but sometimes, I just want to ask, is it going to be generally?
What do you think?
I would think it'd be mostly residents who would use it because of parking, but it would be open to the public?
It'd be open to the public.
But he's going to police it, I don't think. Generally, it probably would be mostly used by residents.
Yeah, I would say if, there'd probably be a bylaw saying if, you could probably kick someone out if they're misbehaving or something, especially if they weren't a resident, so.
All right. I don't, is this, is this on?
It's just for the record.
Oh, okay, gotcha. My name is Chris Hoskins. I represent the applicant, and by way of introduction, the gentleman who was sitting beside me is John Barlow. John's well-known in this community. He's been boots-on-the-ground, doing construction work here for, what, four decades, maybe?
83.
Yeah. And so, John and his family own Buchanan Estates, which is the applicant. So, you know, John's been here, and he's, he's seen a lot change, as a lot of you all have, with respect to the demands. John knows the construction industry. John saw this opportunity. He and his team prepared a plan, not much different, there's some differences than the plan that you see, but focus in, take the business out of it, focusing in on what's the most reasonable use of this property to address the diverse housing needs in this community. And I know that you don't have to take John's, or my word for it, or John's word for it, you can look at the, you can look at the comprehensive plan, and if you look, you are wondering, okay, so why isn't Barlow or Buchanan doing all single-family? Well, if you go to the comprehensive plan, and this comprehensive plan, by the way, I think you all are familiar with it, but, I mean, it's truly a community document. These documents are prepared with a lot, a lot of fingerprints go on them. I know that the comprehensive plan discusses community involvement, and so, this thing is not something that's done over the weekend. I think it's mentioned several years in the comprehensive plan. A lot of thoughts put into it, but with that, it's very long. But it says in there, if you go to the future land use map, which was actually referenced in a prior presentation, I think it's page 37, maybe, of the comprehensive plan. So you go to that, you go to that future land use map, and that future land use map is saying, okay, or the comprehensive, or plan itself is, this is a guide or a blueprint to how we are going, the goals for how we're going to grow, okay? So go to that future land use map, and if you go to it, you'll see where the applicant's property is. It's identified as medium residential, okay? And medium residential is defined in the plan. Medium residential is this mixed residential use concept. The, it is not identified as light density, okay? The definition of light density was just in front of you all primarily dealing with single-family and townhomes. So with all of that, and Michael's, I'm going to pass it over to Michael. With all of that information, Barlow submits his application. This has been a, you know, it's a process, and for good reason. There has been recently a study done, and it was actually commissioned by the city and county, I believe, and that, it's, I think it was, it's basically a housing needs assessment. I don't know if that's the term of it, but it's, it was commissioned by a consultant. And so that consultant came back a couple months ago, provided the joint local government what they're seeing, you know? They interviewed people.
They had findings.
Recommendations and the like. And one of them, and that should be in that packet that you may have been provided, but one of them, which I found interesting, I mean, in the plan, they're totally consistent, the plan and the report are totally consistent in that the demand for apartments is there, and it's still, and it's still here. In fact, if you, if you look at the, I think it may be the first key in that report, okay? This is a report by the consultant. First, there was talk, there's talk about the need to expand, to address the, quote, extremely tight market, apartment market, and then the study said, determined that one of their keys, key recommendations is to, quote, "expand medium and high-density residential districts in, among other areas, southwest, south, sky, county." So I think that that report, if anything, just confirmed that, you know, the comprehensive plan and the recommendations therein with regard to kind of how we grow are consistent, and we believe that this plan conforms with that comprehensive plan objectively, and it is the most reasonable option. And then, Michael, I'll let, pass it to you for kind of more specifics about the plan.
Yeah, and just to sum up our presentations of today, we believe three-story versus two-story, the three-story reduces the sprawl, it doesn't add much negative. We're not proposing a six-story building. Three-story is very general, best-use practice for apartments in the Georgetown area. And then we feel the open space presented is very adequate and usable for all apartment tenants and single-family owners of the proposed development. And we believe our initial plan is the appropriate action. It provides a significant buffer with easements, mature tree line along the northern boundary that will remain, and then a single, a line of single-family lots before multifamily area comes into play. And then, and also that the comprehensive plan requires this type of development for a medium-density future land use parcel. And finally, we have, currently have 100-plus lots for future development that are approved that will have to be constructed. It's about, and then if this is approved, 65 more single-family lots, so we have about $80 million in future single-family homes investment in this area. We have to get these apartments right to maintain our investment in the area, and I think that speaks to how much skin in the game we have in these apartments as well. Thank you all.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I have a question for you. So in these apartments and townhomes duplexes, different things are talked about in here. So you all be renting them, these yourself, right? They'll be your property, your apartments?
Yes.
Any idea what these apartments are going to rent for? What is their market going to be?
Yeah.
Because you reference in the comprehensive plan, one of the things they talked about, also another document is about affordable housing.
I'm John Barlow. Our last apartment complex in Stewart Hall, which is in the middle of houses that go anywhere from 500 to 800,000, the one-bedrooms are renting for 1350, and I think the two-bedrooms were going for about 1,550.
And how about the townhomes?
The townhomes are usually right around 2,000.
Okay, thank you.
But we, we actually have sold off all, probably 90% of the townhouses to owner occupants. That's usually what we try to do is to, you know, it's a function of how much demand there is for the townhouses, and it usually, I would say, would take three years for those, I think there are 15 townhouses to become all owner occupied.
Okay.
I think one thing that might be helpful when you come back for the final proposal is if there is a way to show the topography and what these buildings will look like relative to McClellan Springs, as well as, you know, sort of all sides of it.
Gotcha.
Does that make sense?
Our rendering?
Yes, thank you.
And we have some examples of some apartments we built in Lexington as well that will probably be general use if you all see them.
You got those tonight?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay.
So this is the, a lot of brick. We think it's a very nice product, so it'll blend in with, well with the housing product that we propose as well.
Thank you. Now, I'm assuming that most of you all out here have something to say.
Yeah.
So, let's be civil, okay? There's no need for name-calling and trying to destroy something. Just state your, your purpose and what you would like to see. If you have questions, ask those. If you've got a comment, make, make the comment. We've got a lot of people here, and so we're going to ask you to, I hope that you're organized and you have a speech of bullet point, the A, B, C, D, or 1, 2, 3, 4, and get it down and sit down and let, let someone else speak so that we're not here all night long, okay? So for the record, we need you to come to the podium and state your name, and if you have something to add to it or disagree with it, please don't say for the audience, wait and come up to the microphone, because we need that on record. This microphone does not broadcast out into the room, it's just for recording purposes. So if you're, you're hard of hearing and you can't hear, there's no volume for us to, to turn this up. It is what it is. It is just for the record and not to broadcast out here. So I wish we could go in alphabetical order, or 1, 2, 3, or something, so it's just going to be whoever wants to get up and speak first, whoever's closest to the mic or gets up first.
But I would like to say, it's always good that the public is here.
Oh, yeah.
Because this affects your neighborhood where you've invested a lot of money, and we want to hear what you have to say, however long it takes.
Could I just add one thing? Sorry. I let Chairman Mifflin know ahead of time that I had a commitment at 7:30 I needed to leave for, so I don't want any, anybody to think I'm leaving because of what anybody says. At 7:30, I need to get up and skadoodle, so...
She never told me that.
I apologize in advance.
Yes, sir.
My name is Mark King.
Mark King?
Yes, sir.
All right, thanks, Mark.
I live at, well, 129 McClellan Springs Drive, and I just have a couple, a couple questions about the plot up on the screen there. The entrances and exits, has there been like a traffic study or anything done to show what that might do to the, cause the light's right down at the very bottom of that road. And you got all, all that traffic and all the housing, everybody coming out right there, say 8:00 AM in the morning. Like what's that gonna do as far as traffic goes to that area and at that particular light? And second question is at the very top, where it looks like the road goes into McClellan Springs Drive, does that have to go into McClellan Springs Drive? Cause it looks like the other end of it goes out already. So does it have to run up through our neighborhood, I guess, is what I'm asking?
And I meant to say this at first, if, if you all don't mind, when you've got questions like this, both the Barlos will take some notes and then we'll just address all of them instead of them getting back and forth between each speaker. Is that all right? Is that fair enough?
It may be easier for us just to come up and go ahead.
Okay, go right ahead.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna misread.
No, I was trying to make it easier on you, but.
That's okay.
Access.
So, we, we did have a traffic study done. It was, the majority of traffic from this development will come out the main entrance. I, I really don't see this being utilized except for a handful of lots back here. And, I mean, especially the apartments, the townhomes, they will, unless there's an emergency, they will all use the main, the main entrance. Generally speaking. Correct.
With the traffic study?
So, traffic, so.
Is there a light?
Uh, there is no light proposed. There's a traffic. Traffic study was performed and it was determined a left-turn lane would not be warranted. However, staff felt apprudent and we agreed to install a left-turn lane into the development to help with stacking during peak hours in the afternoon. But it was.
What about a left-turn lane out of the development? Help alleviate traffic?
We don't anticipate having too mu, enough traffic to warrant a left-turn lane. And generally speaking, the road will be wide enough as a collector road within the development to have people be able to make right turns probably around people. But that, that was not warranted.
And just, I mean, this traffic study was not performed by us. I think it was performed by Vision Engineering.
Correct.
And they were applying against certain standards, correct?
Yeah. They, they performed the traffic study, Vision Engineering performed the traffic study to, I, international of.
And they actually, their study does not contemplate folks going out of the other, of those ways in the areas which aren't developed yet. Okay? So it is working under an assumption that there's two, is it that there's two or that Paines Depot?
It works under the assumption that Paines Depot will be the main entrance. Pretty much the worst-case scenario, so. But again, people, once the connections are made and it's fully developed, you know, it's all a percentage game, who goes where.
Right. All right. Thank you. Yeah, John?
To answer the man's second question, I think he said, can we close this off? We're not opposed to that, but if you lose your interconnectivity and, and I'm not sure planning would go for that, but we're not opposed to it.
Well, if you look at Indian Hills, Indian Acres, when, you know, other subdivisions are developed around those and you have those road networks, it's just logical.
You're not gonna put any more gates there, so.
Yeah, not, there won't be any gates there. Okay. Anybody else want to speak, or do we need call for?
My name is Melissa Atkins. I just have a couple of questions in relation to talking about the turning lane. Are you gonna enter that and across from Copperfield?
We will have to widen on our side for a little bit.
Okay. And have you ever exited or been on that road? Any point in the day? Okay. So we all live on that part of the road. If you try to turn left out of McClellan Springs and you're heading to 460, it will back up every day. To turn left to go to Western Elementary, it backs up at the light. If you've ever been at that light, if you were not in, if there's someone not in that left-hand lane to go straight to 64, you're not getting a turn lane either direction. It's backed up. We back up on it daily. So, you're saying that you're gonna add, you're gonna widen it a little bit into your area at Copperfield?
Correct.
Okay. And clarify, you're gonna, will you be able to turn left out of the neighborhood and right on the neighborhood?
You'll be able to turn left or right, correct.
Okay. Cause I'm telling you, the traffic on Paines currently is a disaster. And that road is not wide enough for the people that already live here in McClellan Springs and in Ward Hall to add an additional portion of traffic.
Yes, ma'am.
And when was this traffic study conducted?
It was completed back in May.
Of this last year?
This year.
Wow.
Unfortunately, I, I am not a big fan of traffic studies.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because they don't take a lot of things into consideration. And the Paines Depot is a, is a state highway. The highway department does not look forward to the, everything. They wait for things, traffic gets backed up before they will make changes. So, it's not the developer's fault.
I'm just asking, when it was not?
I understand, and I'm just trying to explain to, to all of you all out here, we see it with, with every development, that the highway department likes to, to fix things instead of being proactive.
The amount of wrecks that have happened at that light?
Oh, yeah.
For turning left or right? I'm just saying like the traffic.
Everybody that lives on that end of town, I live right there, right across the street from you.
I just wanna make sure they realize the traffic this is gonna add.
Yeah. I agree with you. But I'm saying the, the highway department will not look at it before it happens.
Okay. And I'm just curious when the.
And one, one last point to add on the traffic.
I'm not opposed to it, Melissa.
Traffic study, yeah. Looked at traffic coming out of the entrance as the worst-case scenario. Did not consider looking this direction for it. So if traffic is really backed up, there will be an option to come out here, through our development actually, to.
Is that road connected now?
Yes, is, this is constructed here. We have a little bit left here to construct, but we'll make that connection eventually and.
That goes into the 460?
That goes into the bypass, yes.
Goes into the bypass, but enough.
So there will be multiple options.
If you're going to Frank's, good way to go. All right. Anyone else?
I'll underscore.
Let me brought up this map, because if you look at all of their new developments.
State your name, please.
Josh Kyle, 109 Clear Springs Drive. So if you look at all their new developments, the yellow, all the yellow spots, there is four apartment complexes in that entire development that they're doing. The apartment complexes do not fit in this development. As you can see by their own map that they've made, of all the new development that's gonna go there, there are no apartment complexes. And additionally, they're talking about this traffic study, they're not taking into account the 104 more lots that they're gonna sell in all those areas. And just because we requested them two-story buildings doesn't mean they need to keep the same number of apartments. They don't need 240 apartments. They can keep the five buildings if apartments were going to have to be necessary and still only have those two stories. I don't know if they talked about it, but in the study, talked about affordable housing. They're claiming this is affordable housing. $1,500 a month for a two-bedroom apartment, to me, does not sound like affordable housing. This is a ruse for them to make more money if they rent those out, 60 apartments for each building, that's a million dollars a month. They're, they're in this for the money. They're putting these apartment complexes in there just so they can get more money in their pockets. And they just need to go through their single-family homes in all of this area because there's no reason for those apartment complexes. He talks about this trail system. Who's gonna build the trail system? Who's gonna upkeep the trail system? We, on McClellan Springs, we have our time keeping the, the bushes trimmed at, at the entrance of the neighborhood. They're not gonna upkeep trail systems. They're not gonna build trail systems. They're gonna tell you they're gonna build something. In this meeting, they'll tell you, yes, we'll do it. They'll come back in here later and be like, no, we're not ever gonna do it. They've done that in McClellan Springs. They were gonna build, there was a tree line. It's not supposed to ever be torn down. It's the back of McClellan Springs. Barlow Homes tore it out on Ward Hall subdivision. So, there's just no reason for them to continue with these, the apartments. That's.
Thank you.
And as far as the Clear Springs Drive goes, if, if there is apartments, I would 100% be sure to request that that stays closed. We don't need interconnectivity. All that does is make a big raceway for everybody to come in any certain directions to, to go. And it just, McClellan, Clear Springs Drive, where it feeds into, is an arid road, not as wide as McClellan Springs Drive. We got many kids that live on that street, play outside all day. We don't need people racing through there from that subdivision or so. Put a do-not-cross sign, put a pole up, keep, keep traffic from McClellan Springs out of this neighborhood.
You need to talk to the police department about that. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Itzy King. And I just also wanted to say that I'm also against the apartments and the attachment to our neighborhood. I don't understand why there can't be two exits without connecting it to a narrow street in our neighborhood. I understand that growth has to happen. The house is fine, and that's not an issue. We all understand that. I also, just to piggyback on what Josh was saying about the green space, I have a little bit of personal history with Barlow with green space. We bought our house on McClellan Springs that backs up to Barlow's property. When we bought it, the reason we bought it was because there was a tree preservation area there. Metal signs, tree preservation all, all marked. Fast forward a few years, and Barlow is building a house behind us, their property, they can do that. But then one day, the trees are being cut down. I contact the city, they come out. Just to read, well, let me go, I have a, I have an email from the city, the Director of Services at Georgetown Planning, to John Barlow at the time. And basically, they were able to get around that because the plot that they were recorded, this is the email from the city to John Barlow.
From the planning, someone, the planning commission?
I'm, I, planning, yeah. The Director of Planning Services.
I'd like to know the name of that person.
Joe Kane.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm not gonna read the whole email, cause it's quite lengthy. But basically, he's saying the plot that was recorded for the last phase at Ward Hall did not place the tree preservation in the correct location. And he goes on to say that they were fine with him cutting damaged trees or dead trees, but the, the rule was that he was supposed to contact Joe Kane and he was gonna walk that tree line together, and that never happened. They just went ahead and started cutting them. The end of the email basically says, there was an agreement to preserve that tree line during development, and it was a condition of approval. There's lots of other things in this email. John Barlow responded that he agreed, that he understood. Our issue with the city, we had ended up having to go for a vote. At that point, there was a house already built, but they couldn't, there wasn't room unless they cut the trees. So they voted yes to allow it to continue and the trees be cut two to one, even though the guy that voted no said the 30-year-old trees, you can't get those back, with one caveat. And that caveat was that Barlow was supposed to build, put eight trees behind me and my neighbor. It's gonna take 30 years to develop, to grow up, and he was supposed to put that. That did not happen for months. And the only reason that it happened was because I was a thorn in Georgetown County, the city planning and zoning side. And they ended up sending a letter to Barlow, basically saying, cease construction. And they had to stop that day constructing in Ward Hall, and the next day, there were eight trees behind. So when I'm sitting here and listening to how there's gonna be all this green space and they're gonna have walking trails, it's not gonna happen. And as I, the variances that's already been approved for the houses behind, I understand that's already done, but that doesn't benefit anyone except for the developer. It doesn't benefit the people buying those homes to be on smaller lots. It doesn't benefit anyone being packed in. And I'm hoping that you guys just consider, like all the people here, that's against it. There are other options than building another, extending the apartments. They don't have to build them. They can build houses. They don't have to build so many. It doesn't have to connect.
Thank you, Melissa.
Melissa, do you mind, what?
Missy.
Missy, do you mind making sure, I want a copy of, can you have a copy of what you're talking about?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I will need to rehook to Apple.
My name's Kent Wagner. I live at 112 Spring Wolf Drive. I have four teenagers. Two of them can drive, two are about to drive. And just kinda reiterating, one, you can be praying for me, cause that's a lot of teenagers. But the second piece is that it is an incredibly dangerous road. We force our kids to drive out specific ways. I think, like, when you talk about the traffic studies, I don't know if that included looking at this full development or kinda like Josh was saying, that, so looking at just what they're talking about right now. But you start to put that kinda pressure on that road system. And I know you guys can't necessarily change that, but you can't make decisions about how much pressure is put on it by how many people are allowed into that neighborhood. I also do not bemoan you guys, or hold, would not hold it against you to try to make as much profit off of this piece of property as you can. But I also know that we, while you have 30 years of doing construction here, I don't know if you live in Georgetown or not, we do live here and we have a heart for this place. I moved here from Kansas during COVID, which is a terrible time to move. But when I drove up to our neighborhood and looked at Georgetown, I literally for the last five years have been telling everybody, I live in a postcard. And I think you put apartments there and you ruin that picture of what Georgetown is for every single person who's moving here. And no, I don't have the history of living in Georgetown a long time. I have lots of friends who are kinda townies, you know? And, and I appreciate them because they tell me the history and I learn it. But I love the beauty of this place and what it, what it represents, because it does represent that anybody can move here and anybody can be successful because of what Georgetown has set for us. I know there's a comprehensive plan that allows for this. I don't know that that means you have to do it. I think looking at what our space looks like right now and creating a plan that still allows them to be profitable, maybe not at the profit of putting three different, the essentially, three different mortgage holders on one piece of property. Putting one mortgage holder on a piece of property makes sense to me. It makes it beautiful still, and it allows us to create a safe environment for kids, Toyota workers, everybody who's coming in there. And it keeps this place beautiful and the kinda place that people are gonna, there's plenty of space in this area for apartments. So, anyway, I appreciate you guys. Thank you. And I know how long a board meeting's gonna be. So thanks for doing this.
Hello, I'm Eric Goverman. I live at 108 McClellan Springs. And please forgive me for reading from my phone. I'm not a strong public speaker. However, my wife is a strong Christmas decorator and Buddy the Elf used dollar printer paper. I've lived in McClellan Springs for over 10 years now. What drew me here and what keeps me here is the sense of community, the safety and the balance between our neighbors, neighborhood, and the out-of-county feel. The proposed apartment development would threaten to disrupt that balance. This development does not reflect the character of our neighborhood. We chose this community because it's a quiet, family-friendly environment. The high-density apartments attached directly to our streets will firmly change that identity. I'm not opposed to growth, but growth should be thoughtful, sustainable, and respectful of the existing residents, not driven from the developers' profit margins. I urge the council to reconsider this proposal and explore alternatives that meet the housing needs without sacrificing the quality of life that we have worked so hard to build. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
My name's Paul Curry. I live at 107 Buffalo Run Court, right at the corner of, at the very back end of the subdivision. Wonder if you wouldn't mind changing back to one of the drawings? There were four drawings that were included in the materials this evening. Two of which, that one, and then there was another one that has a single apartment building all by itself, that one. It's just really, really odd. And we talked about this, I actually talked about this the last month, that that area up in the very northwestern corner is actually zoned as green space because there are utility byways that go through there. Very passionate about that because that's where I live, in that very northwest corner up there. And so having an eight-apartment, two-story apartment building, literally surrounded by nothing but single-family homes, just seems very, very odd. Because, as was stated in the last meeting, and again, this evening, that they were going to try and separate the apartments and townhomes from the single-family homes down along Paines Depot. But then to see that one eight-unit building all up there by itself, right next to right next to my house seems very, very odd.
Eric, let me inter-
Paul.
Or Paul, I'm sorry. One of the, one of the things we got last month was the, the people in the audience didn't think that was a good place for the, the green space because it was so far back by itself. The developers said they backed it up to the green space off the end of your street. And so I've got a question for you. I drove back your street on, on Buffalo Run, is that what it is? Does anyone use that green space except the people in the, in the cul-de-sac?
Yeah, the entire neighborhood. The kids are playing in that. We actually keep it mowed ourselves.
Okay.
Because the builders who initially mowed it quit mowing it during COVID, and so we took it over as neighbors to mow that, keep that field mowed. Every kid along those three or four streets plays in that field.
Okay, I was just wondering, I didn't know if, just that cul-de-sac people used it?
In that, that woods area, there's a, a tree line, which was also spoke about, that the tree line would be maintained. You put a house and apartment building in that corner, all of those trees disappear.
Okay, so if they, if they ended up putting a green space back there, it would be used, you think, by more than just those few houses around it?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
We're, we're, we refer to it as green space there.
Yeah.
As we stated at the last meeting, as residents of McClellan Springs subdivision, we strongly disagree with the builders and believe that the addition of these proposed townhouses and apartments will negatively affect the quality of life in our neighborhood due to increased traffic and overcrowding. Yes, there is absolutely a comprehensive plan, but a comprehensive plan is just a guide. It is a living and breathing document. It does not specify what has to happen, it specifies what can happen. But that is guided by folks who live in an area, and the needs of the community are also weighed in on that. So we're here to tell you what our needs are. One of the things that the attorney for the builders said here tonight, he used the phrase a couple of times, we believe this is a reasonable and appropriate use of space. Well, the definition of reasonable and appropriate use of space really differs when you're a builder and developer wanting to make a lot of money off a property, or reasonable and appropriate use of space for folks who live there in the homes on the street. I'm sure that Mr. Barlow doesn't live in the neighborhood. So his definition is probably a little bit different than ours. Also, nothing in this revised plan addresses how the additional water and sewer capacity will be addressed, which we did bring up at the last meeting. That has not been discussed here this evening, which is a current issue that we have and why many of the buildings have not been built already, because that sewer capacity is down. While the updated map does reduce, the two of them do reduce from three-story to two-story, our additional concerns voiced at the previous meetings have not all been addressed. In fact, additional concerns have now been raised by the addition of additional buildings. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Appreciate it.
Just want to respond to a few things on record. First off, the, the apartments are not intended to be affordable housing. That's, that's not what we'll be constructing there. Second, water and sewer capacity will have to be approved by Georgetown Water and Sewable, Sewer Municipal Authority, and we don't anticipate any problems there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Kim Tracy, and I live at 134 Old Fort Drive. We were the fifth house in McClellan Springs, and we've been there for nearly 20 years. I agree with so many of my neighbors, just because you can doesn't mean you should. We've all moved there in that space to have that quiet space, quiet residential space with good schools and the community that we chose. None of us want the apartments. None of us want the cut-through. And you're talking about, I was thinking about this earlier today. I was thinking, my neighbors are, are the community. We're a neighborhood full of teachers, firemen, policemen, nurses, people who work at Toyota. I mean, we are the backbone of the community. If we put apartments next to McClellan Springs and Ward Hall, if we don't want to live by that, where do we go? Where else is there to go and have a quiet community? You know, there's, there's nowhere else in town like McClellan Springs where you can have that quiet peace. So then, are we willing to risk losing all these people who live and work in the community? It's, we're the backbone of the community. So I just, I would implore everybody to really think about, just because we can, should we? Need to think about, you know, we need to think about preserving our communities and stuff like that. Thanks.
Thank you, Kim.
I think she brings up a very good point. You know, we, we can't say who's going to live in our apartments or our communities, but you know, we expect nurses, healthcare providers, manufacturing technicians, civil servants, teachers, firemen, first responders, and other middle-income workers to live there as well. Just wanted to bring that up as well. Thank you.
Hold up a minute. While you're up there, I kind of want to hit on what they were talking about, just because you can, maybe we shouldn't. What do you feel about not doing the apartment complexes and putting all family homes in there? What's your shot? And I'm not, I'm just answering the question.
Well, Chris, Chris was going to bring up the process of how we got here.
That's what I talked about earlier, is the question of, well, why are we not building all single-family homes? And I believe that-
Chris, come on up to the microphone, please.
Yeah, the question was, that I, the point I was trying to make earlier was, what homes, what types of homes should be there? What types of homes are consistent with the growth plan as, as prescribed and the comprehensive plan? And if you go off that comprehensive plan, I would submit to you that it's what you'd see, right, what you see with the single-family and the townhomes. There are considerations in place by the Barlow's, by the applicant. You know, they, they're, they are aware of the single-family, and that is why the design is as it is. So that, I, I don't know if I answered your question, but-
I, I guess what I'm trying, what I'm, I mean, I guess it's probably how I asked the question, but would you consider, would Barlow Home consider doing this development without the apartment complex?
I think the answer is no.
No future revenue stream for it?
I mean, I understand that, that that's where everything is going.
Yeah.
But it seems to me like the people around you all doesn't want the apartment complexes.
And I-
Would there be any give, I guess is what I'm trying to, trying to ask.
John, and I believe the answer.
John, come on up to the microphone.
Come on up. We are following the comprehensive plan for medium density. McClellan and Ward Hall is low density. You all changed it to medium density, and we're just following the comprehensive plan. And it would be under utilizing the available land there is to develop for the demand that Scott County has. We're just following the, you know, the guidelines that you all have set up.
Can we get back up?
Okay, thank you. I'm Kent Wagner. Is, yeah, I'm sorry.
If you don't mind, just, Kent?
Yeah.
Let me get everybody that likes to speak first.
Go ahead.
Before we get anybody that's coming up a second time, please. We'll get you back up here, though.
Hello, my name's Christopher Good. I live at 104 Clear Springs Drive. So you mentioned the change from a low density to a high density earlier on. I was here for that meeting. I mean, again, just because it is, doesn't mean we have to continue down that path. Just saying. So another thing I wanted to bring up was the interconnectivity between McClellan Springs and this new subdivision. So you'd mentioned, like, in Indian Acres, that we, like, I ride bicycles. I may not look it, but I do. I take my, me and my wife go every evening just about. We have a kid that we put in a trailer. We go all through Georgetown. I love that fact. That's a great thing. I'm not riding to where there's an apartment complex. I'm just going to be honest. Like, it's just a hideous thing to look at. There's, in the Indian Acres neighborhood, just for example, there are no apartments. There's nothing near the Payne's Depot. The closest apartments is the one just on the other side of the water tower, and it's all by itself. It's separated from the rest of the community. It's enclosed. It's not a part of the subdivision at all. So, yeah, I don't understand, first of all, why we need the apartments. I know that's not what we're here to completely discuss for vote for the apartments. But it's definitely a single-family home neighborhood. And even to that thought, you're mentioning this new additional development close to McClellan Circle that you guys are planning. Is it 90 some units? What's the units? So why not just do the apartments on this side of the road?
That's already developed.
It's what?
It's already developed.
It's already developed. Well, it sounds like that would have been a better spot for apartments. It's right on the edge, you get high-traffic area, you get a lot of people in and out versus on Payne's Depot, which we already have, as mentioned, traffic issues. Again, I live on Clear Springs Drive, so that's the one that, or the road that's connected or proposed to open up for through traffic. I already have had a vehicle swapped, and that's a closed-off, the road isn't, was, which I was not there for development of that subdivision. But now you can tell that compared to all the roads around it, it is not wide, and it was not designed for a medium-density unit addition for through traffic. It just isn't. I mean, you barely can get the garbage truck through there. So looking at additional, there was four proposals in the document that we seen, or that was provided. We only seen two tonight. So I don't really understand what your guys' proposal is for which one you guys want, because, I mean, they all seemed-
We, we believe our initial proposal from last month is the most reasonable and best use of the land. We, we prepared these other ones as talking points, but we honestly don't prefer them. And, you know, tonight is, since no action can be taken, is to hear opinions and take that in and for our final application in December.
Hey, Michael, you might just explain what the other-
Okay, yeah. So this is the three-story option, looking at any more green space up by the apartments and losing the green space in the back corner. That's what we call option A122.
Show where you're adding the green space on there for the month.
Yeah. We added, we dropped apartment units here and added green space here, dropped this green space in the back and added apartment units here. The next one is a two-story option with the seven buildings and 15 townhomes.
That top building backs up to the entire subdivision up there, correct?
That's, that's-
Or their backyard.
Yeah. It's a north property line of ours.
And so that they were, so there is a challenge there, and it's because, as, as Michael explained, the topography and that hints the PUD, Planned Unit Development, there are certain spots where, I'm, I'm not an engineer.
Yeah, I'll speak to that. So we have to make a connection to our southern property neighbor. We have to make a connection to the creeks of Ward Hall here, and then you have these, these streams here where it's not possible to do all those things at once and keep putting apartments back here. We have to move them up that way.
Well, that, that was just to put a two-story apartment instead of three-story apartments and keep the same number of apartments, same number of units.
And then the last option is kind of a hybrid with the two-story apartments and then adding a green, green space here at the corner and then losing green space in the back. So the two ideas are two-story versus three-story, and then where do we, where do we put the green space?
So then-
Our preference is our original design.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am. Come up to, what, just one second. Chris, are you through?
I just have one more comment.
Okay.
Again, this neighborhood is for single-family homes. And if you're going to do apartments, the proposals, even with the three-story, are all not great ideas. So as mentioned previously, why 320 units? Just reduce the number of units, get more single-family homes. If you want an apartment, stick one apartment there and call it good, you win. But why all, like, why replace all the single homes and the cul-de-sac, or even add the eight-unit piece on the top western corner of the property? It's just ludicrous. But, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I did sign my name before, but I swear.
Please come on up here. We'll-
I swear I am.
We'll have to swear you in, but take you to jail when we get through.
My name's Elena Moore. I live in Payne's Landing.
If you would, Mr. Perkins.
Oh, I swear.
Thank you. Your, your name again?
Elena Moore. I live in Payne's Landing. I am sister and, sister-in-law to the occupants at 121 McClellan Springs Drive. I helped her find the house. I have some questions. I understand that the new development that Barlow would like to do has a revenue stream in the future, which the stated number, 240 apartments, make the whole thing probably feasible to build in order that they can get their money back and have a future revenue stream. It also makes a sardine area. If you look at what is up here, you can look at these, it's, it's in the white on top.
Here you are.
Thank you. This gentleman is going to look at his back door and see two homes. This gentleman's going to come back and see two homes. And I'm trying to show you the flavor of what is here is a lot different than what is existing above it. When they did the four, or when they did these four, that, the question is, can you go from three stories to two stories? You, they will lose on four apartment complexes, 20 apartments each. That's 20 apartments. That's a hit to revenue streams. Okay, so they understand that. But to make it work, there was another picture they had that said, that they're not even in favor of, that puts the apartment houses right up to the existing McClellan Springs subdivision and probably loses, I tried to count, 15 houses. 65 houses have already been approved last meeting. And so if they change and take where the, some of those homes were and put another apartment house because three-story, what if you come back and say, three stories is an eyesore? There goes their future revenue stream, there goes the, the basis of making this subdivision, and then possibly lose some houses in order that they can have even more buildings to represent the future revenue stream. I don't know the solution. I do know that it is 700 and some cars evidently is what they said before, is going to be the addition to the area based on the people that are going to live there. I know that you can't come out on Copperhead with 700 somewhere cars. They're, and they're, they're not going to do it all at once. But still, it's changing the flavor of what has been there for so long. I think rather than change the flavor of an entire subdivision, there's McClellan Springs, there's Ward Hall, they've been there for a long, why can't they come up with something that complements it? And I'm not sure that single-family homes with these teeny-tiny lots complement what's currently existing there. And that's my two cents.
Thank you very much, Mike. Appreciate it.
My name's George Maynard, and I didn't sign in and hold my hand up and I swear to-
George.
Anyhow, my knees are bad. And I agree with Mark and Missy on the green space. It has a way of disappearing over time. I used to cut that back thing with my lawnmower too for about 10 years. And like I say, it has a way of disappearing. Now, I have a couple of- a couple of concerns that haven't been mentioned. Most of them's been mentioned by the folks here. Georgetown, their, their utilities are probably gonna be almost overloaded with this thing. Taxes are going up every day. I'm seventy-six years old, and I made a comment one time to the tax authority here that they're gonna put me out of my house eventually 'cause I'm on fixing it. And their comment to me was, get a smaller house. But anyhow, our utilities, like water and sewer and all this stuff, are overloaded now. And, and I still feel like seven-hundred-and-some cars that Elena said back here is a low estimate because very few people, as they continue, their family continues to grow, don't have two or three cars in that family.
That's right.
And also, Elena made another point about the sardine. When you first build these apartments, they're gonna be pretty nice. I'm gonna give it to you. They're gonna be pretty nice. But as they get a little age on them, and the, the area is gonna go down. You're gonna get a bit of a crime element in there because there's so many people packed together, and these places tend to, as they get age on them, they don't have as nice of people in there as they had when they were brand-new. And I have concern about that, and I have concern about, we've got a lot of babies in our neighborhood. And when people drive too fast, you get in a hurry, they're gonna hurt them babies. And that's all I got.
Thank you, George.
Come right on, John.
Thank you. My name's John Hummerick, and I, I live near the area. And I'd also like to voice my opinion that the area's, it's surrounded by single-family homes, and that this also will change the character of the area. It, it seems to me like a large part of the disagreement might be the residents like the flavor and the way the area is now, and the development, it seems, is steered towards high density. I think the original restrictions for the classification is a two-story apartment, if I understand right. And they asked for a variance for a three, for a third story to pack more people in. For the housing, there is a set lot size for that residential classification, and the developer requested and got a variance for smaller lots. So, it, it seems like the difference is the residents who want to keep the area and the flavor the way it is, and the developer who wants to pack as much density into that area as they can. So, I, I just wanted to voice my opinion, and thank you all so much for letting me to speak. And I appreciate your question about, well, why not just make it single-family? You probably wouldn't have a single voice up here today opposing that. Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any?
Very briefly, if I may, and this was discussed at the last meeting, the ordinance provides that there is, you, you can set back an additional fee based on the increase of the side yard setback. And it's undisputed that the set, the setback we have is extended so that we are allowed to have at least buildings of forty-two feet when the ordinance says thirty feet, unless the side yard setback is extended, which is what we are doing. Forty-two feet would be three stories, and that would satisfy the, the ordinance.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to, to speak tonight?
I guess I've been really quick.
Kent, oh, I'm sorry. Kent had, had come up here.
Hello. I'm Logan Brothers. I'm at 112 Warfield Point. Just like that gentleman over there, I'm also not a public speaker, so you guys will have to excuse me for that. First things first, I would like to ask you all to consider how many people were in attendance at the last meeting. Just know that their attend, their lack of attendance at this meeting does not equate to their approval for what this developer is presenting to you all. I can assure you that when you vote next month, they will be here, and they will remember what you all decide. Let's see. I would wager a large sum of money that none of the three people here representing the developer live in a neighborhood that has multifamily residences staged proudly at the front. So, do with that information what you will. Mr. Barlow stating that he is simply following the comprehensive plan, and then his attorney stating that they wouldn't be willing to continue with the development should tell you that everything that you need to know about this development. There is, there is writing on the wall. All you have to do is read it. I personally don't have an answer to this. However, I don't know if this is your all's job or not. I'm not really big into government. So, I would urge you as the board, if it is your job or whoever's job it is, to do some research into the apartment complexes around Georgetown and their current vacancy levels. There is a need that's been brought up several times. However, is that need, has anybody done any due diligence? Do, do we know? Are there openings in the apartments that we currently have? Lastly, the map presented shows that the developer is unwilling to eliminate any potential for their profit, and this is showcased by their hesitance to move green space into areas that they can squeeze several homes into. They haven't even developed a proposal with the issue we, we brought forth last month, being the easement, that five-to-ten-foot path between two single-family residences back to that green space. In regards to the comment about the trails being open to the public, I think the idea that anyone would drive into this development, find a place to park, and use a trail that's two to three acres is nothing more than a pipe dream. I think we all know that. The community have made their opinion on this development very clear. You, as the representatives of the community, have an obligation to do the right thing here and make the decision based on the community, not the developer. Thank you.
I'd like to address one thing, Logan.
Sure.
And, and I'm not for or against anything that's been brought up by either side tonight. But it is, I'll be honest with you, it's been several months, but we looked into the apartment occupancy rate a few, few months ago, and they were at like ninety-five, ninety-six percent rate at some of them, and others had waiting lists. So, I think there is a demand for an apartment. Now, whether it's at, at this price range...
Sure.
...remains to be seen. But, and I don't know about all of them.
The price range is an excellent point, and, and I would retort to what everyone else was saying. It, it doesn't fit the landscape, and it, it doesn't have to be right here.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you.
But wasn't that one of the city council meetings, they asked, asked some question of what he said? And didn't someone, city council, I didn't realize we approved that many, that we've already approved a thousand new apartments already? They hadn't been built yet? Is that true?
Probably so.
Well, that's a lot of new apartments.
Yeah. But, like you said, they haven't...
Yeah, but we've...
Just like out the distillery district, you know, will that ever go?
But they have been approved and planned to be built, right?
They have been discussed. I don't know, but I can't say that they've been approved.
That's a lot of apartments.
Zone change.
Apartments that have been approved...
In the last few months, how many is, is that?
I would have to look at everything. Other, I do wanna just note the difference between a concept plan, which may contain multifamily units, and a development plan, which contains a specified number of con, of, of a multifamily unit. And that, while the concept plan may show it, not everybody executes the full extent of whatever they're showing. Concept plans are explicitly illustrative in nature and just kind of a visual way to help the community and the board understand what is proposed in a general area. So, I would have to go in and look at our statistics to actually get a quantified value. But looking at our others on staff in this instance, I, I, I'm not gonna say that there isn't, but I will need, I would need to do a little bit of research on that value.
If you could have that for our next meeting, because that was discussed in the city council meeting, and they're the ones that actually brought it up, you said...
I, I think we've talked about concept plans, but I don't remember...
Yeah, I'd like to know the hard number.
...the large number of development plans.
I'd like to know that.
Yeah, we can get that.
When and if there is a formal application brought forth, staff can do additional research, but we just need to continue to frame this evening as just discussion about concepts. Staff is not prepared to pr...
Yeah, yeah.
...analyze or anything of that nature this evening.
Yeah. We're just talking about this development. Uh, yeah.
Kent Wagner again. I, I had a quick question. Did you say at the beginning about the green space for apartments that folks don't like that off their decks, and was that, did I hear that correctly? That they don't want those people congregating? I, yes, Mike, I understand you guys, I would also, again, like, wanna create a space that my, that people would want to rent and be in. As you guys have a responsibility to us as citizens, I would ask you to do the same thing they're doing for the apartment complex people, where they're like, we're not gonna put a green space where it's gonna impede the, the people who are actually living in those apartment complexes. We're all asking you to not put apartment complexes where it impedes our property, our value, the, the fam... I'll tell you, I've got neighbors that their little girls are riding their bikes every day up and down our street. It is, it is what every American dreams of, that neighborhood, and I'm not making that up. Kids, it's what all of us complain about. Kids are on video games every day. They're not playing in the streets. That is not true in our neighborhood. They are all over in that neighborhood playing in the streets. I have a basketball goal. I don't know if it's legal, so don't come after me, but it's off, it's off the street because we, we have random kids come over and just play pickup games in front of our house. And it is a beautiful thing, and I would just ask you to do what they're doing for their apartment complex people and, and, and do the, have the same kind of consideration for us. We don't want this. And as a matter of fact, I wish, I was sick the night that there was the rezoning meeting. I wish I could've been here, 'cause I would've fought that too. But I really appreciate all you guys do, 'cause I know these are long nights, but thank you.
Thank you, Kent.
I know it's late, so I have one quick comment. Like, one of the, one of the things that Barlow was coming back with when they were asked, why can't we, or why can't you have no apartments or single-family homes? They were speaking that it would be underutilizing the land. I get that Scott County is growing, but we haven't outgrown the capacity of other areas that they could buy land and build. There's areas where they could buy and build a complex and development where it's not on top of a neighborhood. That's, I think the reason that it's underutilizing land, it has less to do with underutilizing land and more to do with making as much money, which I don't blame them if they're a developer, but they also should be looking out for the communities that they're building. That's all.
Thank you.
Yep.
I just wanna maybe clarify a couple things. As far as the water lines, there's a master water line design that has been put in place by Georgetown Municipal. There's the regional pump station on the outside, which takes care of the sewer capacity once the, the new plant is up and, and operating. So, there's not any deficit as far as utility capacity at all. And one last, going below the two-forty, I think if you talk to any management company, they will tell you, in order to get a, a, a good property manager with sufficient maintenance people to service the, the tenants, you, you, two-forty is, is really the lower end. They, they really like to go to four-hundred. So, we're, we're trying to make sure it's gonna be professionally managed and staffed adequately.
This'll be really quick. It's Mark King again.
Yeah.
I just wanna reiterate one thing I brought up at the very beginning, is this running that goes into McClellan Springs here. Mr. Barlow stated that he was, I believe you said, sir, that you were fine with closing that off. And I wish you guys would really strongly consider that if this goes through, because like some of the other folks have said, you know, a lot of kids play up through there, and there will be a lot of traffic that goes through there. Just whether it be traffic out here on, on the main or on Paints Depot that's blocked up, and people swing out around, maybe trying to go the other way, but it will happen. So, I ask that you just consider that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank all of you all tonight for coming in and making comments. We really, like Harold Dean said at the first meeting, we relish your all's input and comments. Thank Barlow's for coming in and offering a couple of other alternatives. Sounds like they, some people wish there were, were more that were, had nothing to do with departments. But we do thank you for, for bringing us some alternatives to look at. And is it your plan to come back next month? You know? Okay. So, there you go. You know where you all will be the second Thursday in December.
So, can we confirm that day is still gonna be that day? The second Thursday in December is, we're still meeting at that time?
Yes.
And I'd like to make a comment, too. The gentleman stood up here and talked about, you know, we are here to represent the community and represent you all in this development. But we are also here to represent Mr. Barlow and what he does. Everything he does is by the ordinance, you know? So, we're, we're, you know, right now, I have, I'm not open on the whole thing. I took in what you all were saying and what the Barlow's have said. So, just keep in mind, you know, this, these here, I hate so much because I understand what you all are saying, but yet there's not a person in here that would be in Mr. Barlow's shoes that would not wanna make money, whether it be at this development or twenty miles down the road. So, you know, so that's kinda what I want everybody to understand next month, that, hey, this job ain't as easy as it looks.
By any means.
But I...
You make it hooky.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's cool.
But I also appreciate something this commission is not used to hearing, that this comprehensive plan is a guideline versus the law of the land.
Yeah.
So, thank you all for continuing to remind us of that, 'cause for whatever reason, somehow that's been lost in the city of Georgetown. So, thank you.
There you go. Harold Dean, December eleventh.
Good.
Mark it on your calendar.
That's why I was asking. I'm gonna be gone a lot.
You better be back on the eleven.
Mr. Chair, please.
Yes.
Just before everybody heads out for shore.
Yep.
Okay. Just one, point of clarity from staff and scheduling. While that may be the anticipated date, there will be mail issued that confirms the date. So, I don't want anybody running out here thinking a hundred percent sure. Staff has to receive and have consult or an application or a date. There will be similar written notice given. So, let's not all put it in our eye watches or whatever is a walkout or anything.
But as of now, there's nothing foreseeable as of...
I, yeah.
Okay.
Our meeting is December eleventh, but we don't know where we're gonna look at this. And, and we've still got one more item. We've still got one more item on the agenda tonight. Don't get up and leave, commissioners.
No, the rest of you can.
The rest of you can. Thank you, guys. And please be quiet as you go out, or last one out, close the door. Thank you all.
I got it. I got it. Really great? Email straight up.
Yeah. All right. Let's get on with Georgetown Common's early grading request.
You got the whole place.
Elena, everybody left you.
I know. It's 'cause I got a big mouth. I'm the first one to admit it.
Thank you.
So, I think I can discuss this one.
So I think I can discuss this one. I don't know if we have anything official requesting, but there's been a lot of emails back and forth. Georgetown Commons is the, the old Bring Gardner property. It's that big commercial development. We have been reviewing plans now for, I don't, I don't know when. I guess they were heard in 2024 with their number, but we've been reviewing plans for the last six or eight months. They've been working on KYTC approval, sewer design, the stormwater management, all that has been going back and forth. It's my understanding they have some deadlines that they would need to get started real soon to try to start meeting their deadlines. That condition is put on almost every one of these development plans because to keep people from, hey, we got preliminary approval, let's start breaking ground tomorrow when we don't even have a design. And you, we've had a lot of times in the past where a lot of money is wasted and a lot of lawsuits because they just got started and stuff didn't work out without a full plan in place. So at this point, they have a lot of plans. It's been reviewed. They are still waiting on transportation cabinet approval, I think, for final. But I would be comfortable if, if we remove that condition from the, from the plan. I've seen enough. I've got temporary, the stormwater management is ready. So that is, that would allow them to, they would pay the fees, they would get their grading, erosion control, and all that set, and they would possibly get started. I don't know for sure if that is what their, that is what their intent is, but I don't know if Holden's going to, if Holden's around.
He's sitting back there.
Do we have any, like, paperwork on this, on the
What's that? Yeah. There wasn't anything in the packet. So I didn't, I don't have any paperwork on it.
I'll just take over. To be clear, no, no formal requests has come from them. They've just discussed that this is something they may require. So I do not want to assume what, what the applicant would like to do here. I also would not like to preemptively grant a removal of a condition without that formal request coming from them. With that said, though, when this comes back in the future, I wanted to create an opportunity for us to go ahead and discuss it in advance so that it didn't seem like this need or necessity was just coming out of the blue.
Okay. Thank you.
So would we be able to, if they came in tomorrow requesting that, would we need to call an executive session to approve it, or would we have to have the, the whole commission? Would they have to wait till next month to get it approved?
Yeah. So it's, from my perspective, they need to go in front of the whole commission. The, the condition was placed by the whole commission. I know it's been done different ways in the past. Now, as far as whether it's a special called session, a regularly called session, again, it's, it's my opinion that, you know, it needs to be the regularly called session. You know, this is, again, something that we're aware of. It's a conversation that's ongoing. But I think everybody benefits if we hold everybody to the same schedule and calendar. If an exceptional circumstance comes up, and, and it is the, the board's determination that they could or have the ability to hold a special session, then we can go through that route. But again, having had nothing requested, having, you know, I, I'm not willing to, to do any favors to anybody that I wouldn't do for everybody else.
Right. You, you don't want us to vote on it tonight without having anything
Nope.
brought before you.
Yes.
So they're wanting to remove the condition of approval and not wanting to get in early grading permit. Is that correct?
Well, so to get that early grading permit, we have to remove that condition of approval off of the plans. When the plans were originally approved back in October of, of twenty-four, one of the conditions is that no grading can take place until they have a final development plan. And so in this case, we don't have a final development plan. Those are the plans we've been talking about reviewing.
They shouldn't have been approved that because he would have known about that, and I said it either way.
No, I, I mean, I'm in favor of that condition on these plans because everybody would want to get started the next day after approval without construction plans if they, if they could. That condition states that they have to have full final development plan approval, sign off by KYTC, sewer is, is designed and approved, the water, the fire department, everybody signs off for final development plan approval. That's what the condition is now. But after Ben going down back and forth with them for eight months, I think they're, they're pretty ready to get started. But they are still waiting on KYTC. But they have, they have the plans in place. But this would just be earthmoving. We would not approve them to put any pipe in the ground, to work on right of way, to do other things.
No buildings constructed.
No buildings, no.
Could you, could, could we have put in that unless Ben Engineer approves, could approve early grading if necessary? Could you put that in there?
Could we put that in?
Right.
Well, ordinarily, I think, yes, you could do that, although this really sounds like a kind of very specific situation. You may not want to put that in every one. Now that we've heard from staff, and I appreciate wanting to do this thing in normal order. But on the other hand, these are the guys who would otherwise tell you to approve it. It's for excavation only. It's not for installation. I don't know why you couldn't have a motion and do it, tell Holden to go back to his other room.
If you put it on me, they're going to come every other month and say, Ben won't approve my plan.
We'll, we'll keep it a secret that Ben's going to do this.
Okay.
Board, you've heard it. You can do it either way.
Like I say, if they come back in tomorrow or Monday and say, we're, we're ready to go for this, we'd like to get approval, you could call us back in or?
Let me, let me try it again to find a middle ground on this.
Yeah.
You could make a motion to allow for an executive session to make this determination for the board.
Ben Branshaw is ridiculous.
I'll make that motion. I'll take a second.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
I oppose.
Got one opposed. One, two, three, four. You did, did I hear you go?
Aye.
Okay. Forward one for the executive session to, to make that perception. All right? Any other business?
Staff has no other business.
Adjourn.